Okay, good evening. Welcome to the Bellevue City Council meeting for February 5th, 2024. City Clerk, could you do a roll call, please?
Thank you.
Mayor Robinson. Here. Deputy Mayor Malakutian.
Here.
Councilmember Hamilton.
Here.
Councilmember Lee.
Here.
Councilmember Nguyen-House.
Here.
Councilmember Stokes.
Here.
And Councilmembers on.
Here.
Councilmember Stokes, could you please lead us in the flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the republic which stands here, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Justice for all.
So we have a commendation, a proclamation, and an update tonight. And I'm going to begin with the commendation. This is for a friend of mine, Deborah Kumar, who I appointed to the Parks Board. She was the first appointment I ever made. And she became a friend of mine and many of us here on the dais and in the audience and in the city. And so we are all very proud to be able to read this proclamation. Whereas Bellevue resident and community volunteer Deborah Kumar, who served on the city's Parks and Community Services Board and in other volunteer capacities, recently lost her two-year battle with ALS. And whereas Deborah was selected by the mayor and city council for membership on the board in April 2014 and was reappointed for a second term in April 2018. She also served as vice chair of the board in 2016 and chair in 2018. And whereas during Deborah's tenure, the Parks and Community Services Board embarked upon reviewed or completed such major projects as the Hidden Valley Sports Park, Boys and Girls Clubs, a Bellevue partnership, Downtown Park Inspiration Playground, Bridle Trails Neighborhood Park, Downtown Park's Northeast Corner Entry, Diversity Advantage Initiative, East Link Light Rail, Parks and Community Services Accreditations, naming of Georgia Dazumdyke Park, 2016 and 2022 Parks and Open Space System Plan Updates, Newport Hills, Woodland Park Design and Name, Wilberton Grand Connection Initiative, Downtown Livability Initiative, Parks and Community Services Strategic Plan Update, and Recreation Program Plan Update. And whereas Deborah served the board and city as a member of the Wilberton Commercial Area Citizen Advisory Committee and as part of the Parks and Community Services Master Naturalist Program. And whereas as an advocate for parks, trails, and open space, Deborah consistently supported the character of Bellevue as a city and a park and the board's good standing and a reputation for doing valuable work, a legacy she leaves for her family and the entire community. Therefore, I, Lynn Robinson, on behalf of the Bellevue City Council, do this fifth day of February in the year 2024, hereby commend Deborah Kumar for her dedication and service to our community and for providing an example for others to emulate, demonstrating the difference that one person can make and the meaningful legacy we can leave within our communities. And I'm going to come and give this to her husband and two sons, and then I'm going to allow the council to speak a little bit because we all value Deborah so very much in our community. Councilmember Nguyen-House, would you like to start?
Certainly. Thank you, Mayor. I'm so glad that we could do that commendation for Deborah, very special lady that I had the honor of knowing and friends with. And we had a lot of friends in common, some that I see here this evening as well. And we had the privilege of serving together on the Parks Board for a number of years. And she had such a tremendous warmth and heart for service and, as I don't need to tell you, loved parks in our city, the environment in general, and served the city with distinction. And so saddened to hear of her passing. And again, just so glad we could do this commendation to recognize her and all the great work that she did in this city. And she won't soon be forgotten. So thank you for being here this evening. And she won't be forgotten. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Councilmember Hamilton.
Thank you, Mayor. I also had the chance to serve with Deborah on the Parks Board. And so when I got there, she was the chair. And it was clear from the beginning she was very passionate about the work of the Parks Board, passionate about the park mission, brought all of that to it, was very passionate about her family. So if you knew Deborah, you knew about her family, you knew what was going on, who was at college, who was up to what. So those were stories we regularly heard. She brought a unique perspective to the work of parks and to the mission of parks and inspired us all to look at it in a different way and to really invest ourselves in the work of parks. And I really appreciated that about her.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Malakutian.
Yes, Mayor. Thank you. Unfortunately, I did not know her personally, but I know of her. And it's a very sad day because we lost a community member who goes above and beyond to impact the community and surrounding. Not only she has a great family, she has a life, but she cares about how she can impact her community. So it's a very sad day. Condolences to you all.
Thank you. Councilmember Lee.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor. It's really saddened myself and I'm sure the community of Deborah's passing. As a longtime Bellevue resident and longtime council member, I know how important it is for people who volunteers and why the city of Bellevue is such a great city is because people are very engaged and particularly people who took the time, served for so long, you know, 10 years, on the place that really engage and on behalf of the rest of the citizens of City of Bellevue. So it is indeed with the family that you have given her great support. So it's really a sad thing that we have to lose her. But I think it's, again, not too much to say that we will definitely miss her in the future and also thank her for the contributions she had made together with you. So thank you very much and now heartfelt condolence to you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Stokes.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. My time with Deborah goes way back to the 1990s. We both worked with Bellevue School District, with PTAs, the school district, every levy campaign. In fact, that's where I learned how to get out and put signs up and do levies and things back at that time. And Deborah was very involved in that, involved with a lot of things going on with the school district itself. And she was also involved with another parked levy back in 2007, 2008. And I got involved with that with the schools. And our job was to go out in the school district, out in the schools, and work with them to get the PTAs there to get signs up. And so we went out all over the city and she's just, and she's continued for all this time to be engaged and involved. And she always talked about her family, talked about the kids when they were a little smaller than this now at the pool. And she was just a delightful person. And I was glad to see her on the Parks Board when I was the liaison. But she was obviously getting, you know, with having that thing come along. But she just contributed so much. She was always there. And it's just sad to lose her, but she has left a great legacy for us. And I think about her a lot more now, you know, knowing this coming up. And she's always been an inspiration and she will continue to be. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Zion.
Yes, you know, I think we lost an amazing person. When I think about Deborah, I think about somebody who was always a ray of sunshine and just positive energy to get things done and volunteer and engage in the community. And I think about what a legacy she has in all the work that she's done in the city that will be remembered and have that impact. I first met her in the community through some various volunteering and got to know her. And then I was the liaison to the Parks Board while she was still on the Parks Board. And I have to say that the thing that I will remember the most is how persistent she was about parks and the environment and poop bags. So for those that might have had many hours of discussion with her about poop bags and the fact that the ones that we use are not biodegradable and so they have to be thrown in the garbage. And so I just remember thinking about how, you know, even in the small ways as well as big, right, she is always trying to create a lasting impact. And so we will miss her greatly and just thank you for sharing her with us.
Thank you so much. And I'll just say, nobody loved dogs more than Deborah. And the only thing she loved more than dogs was her family. We'll always remember her. Thank you so much. Okay. Now we are on to a Lunar New Year proclamation being read by Councilmembers on.
Yes, thank you.
And, sorry, accepted by Rocky Fong from the, he's the board chair of Chinese Information and Service Center and Gazelle Tan, member of Bellevue's Network on Aging.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I'm honored to read this proclamation. Whereas more than a billion people in many countries worldwide, including many Bellevue residents, celebrate and recognize the Lunar New Year. And whereas the Lunar New Year starts on February 10th this year and is a time when people gather together to celebrate the hope of the coming spring season, gathering with family and friends, and often marking the occasion with cultural events and performances. And whereas 2024 is the Year of the Dragon, one of the 12 animal signs that comes from the Chinese zodiac and represents good luck, strength, and health. And whereas celebrations for the Lunar New Year are taking place around the region, including in Bellevue, where the city is hosting both internal and public events to celebrate. And several community groups and organizations are also putting on events this month. And whereas the city of Bellevue recognizes the value of its diverse residents and the significant cultural contributions of our Asian-American communities as we begin a new year together. Now therefore, I, on behalf of Lynn Robinson, Mayor of the City of Bellevue, Washington, and on behalf of the city council, do hereby proclaim this Friday, February 10th, 2024, and the week thereafter as Lunar New Year Week in Bellevue, and encourage residents to seek out the many celebrations being held in our area in the days leading up to and beyond the start of the Year of the Dragon as a way to join your neighbors in the annual celebration while wishing good fortune, health, and happiness to all. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmembers on, Rocky and Gazelle. You want to come and speak, please?
Gazelle.
Gazelle, thank you.
First off, on behalf of CISC and also on behalf of just the general AAPI community in general, we just wanted to really thank you for the recognition of this important cultural celebration where we continue to want to provide a platform so we can advocate for the cultural celebration values that is important for the community, you know, every year. And also in terms of, you know, continuing to passing the tradition, you know, to the next generation as well. So really thank you for that recognition.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Robinson and council members for the proclamation. We're definitely looking forward to the celebration in the beginning of a very auspicious year. May the wood dragon shower Bellevue and her residents with happiness, good health, good fortune, love, joy, peace, and prosperity.
Thank you so much. Can we do a picture?
Sure.
All right. Claudia Balducci and Reagan Dunn. Thank you for coming tonight.
Hello. Well, thanks, everyone, for having me. It's a privilege and honor to be here. Councilman Balducci and I are going to do this together, which I think is nice for us to cover some ground and maybe get some good questions from all of you. My family first moved here in February of 1950 to Viewcrest, when the population was 7,500 people in Bellevue. We all have deep roots in this community in Bellevue, even though I don't live here any longer, live down south, still very close to my heart. And so we wanted to present our slides to you and then maybe have some questions moving forward, which I'll be happy to take. Hopefully I don't mess this up. Apparently there's a laser pointer here, so I'll try not to get you. Here's some of the things I'm going to cover today. Hopefully that's about the right distance. Redistricting, substance disorder, public safety, court backlog, the budget, some investments, and take questions. Just so you know what's going on for me this year, Claudia will have different assignments. I'm serving as a vice chair of the council, local services, law, justice, government accountability, regional water quality committee, the whole, and I chair the flood district. We changed the district boundaries a little bit. I now have everything south of Interstate 90. The population of the last census has been four years, was 252,000. It's about 275 now for each council district. So I have a larger portion of Bellevue, around 40,000 people. And of course, I grew up in Newport, that tough inner-city neighborhood in Newport Shores. But I know the area well, I know the back roads well, and it's an important part of the community for me. I still have Bellevue, Newcastle, Renton, no longer Kent, but I have Covington, Black Diamond, Maple Valley, Enham Claw, up to Snoqualmie Pass, even parts of Greenwater, Washington. So it's about the size of the state of Rhode Island, a lot of 92,000 unincorporated area residents. So they don't have a mayor or city council, they've got me and the local stuff and Dow Constantine as well. So those are the changes. Let me turn to some substantive issues here. Let's look at the substance use. I'm polling this information on my surveys. It's now a top four issue, behavioral health generally, mental health, substance use disorder. It's up pretty high with homelessness and crime. And you'll see why. I want you to see the chart on the drug and alcohol poisoning deaths in King County. And look at that incredible increase over about the last five years. And the biggest reason, fentanyl combined with a stimulant, which is methamphetamine in most cases, are leading to these substantial increases. So last year, we saw 1,300 tragic overdoses in King County alone. And what the data tells us is that for every fatal overdose, there are about six non-fatal overdose. So it's a real significant challenge. With Councilmember Balducci's leadership and others, we declared fentanyl a public health crisis and we continue to work on that. And one of the solutions to that, and Claudia may talk about it in a second, but passing a crisis care levy, which will put five crisis care facilities in King County, which is really much needed. And we supported that broadly across the entire council. This is the fentanyl graph, so you'll see it's just shooting up. And you can see the difference between 2019, 109, and 2023 fentanyl deaths, nearly 1,100. It is a public health crisis. The council has led by putting forward what's called a laced and lethal program. It's overdose prevention campaign. Basically, we had a significant increase in resources. And the basic idea is, look, it just takes one pill to take a life. I met with the DEA, Special Agent in Charge of five states. Fentanyl is being laced into not just OxyContin pills, but it's being counterfeit into a whole bunch of different kind of counterfeit narcotic pills, even Tylenol III, made in super labs largely in Mexico. There's not quality control. Those vats are being mixed. In some places, you have very high levels of the fentanyl, which is lethal, and some which you don't, which is why we're trying very hard to make people understand the importance that one pill, if it's the wrong pill, can take a life. And so some of the other things that we're trying to do, we've, the county has unanimously supported a conference on substance use disorders. We had over 700 registrants here last May at Bellevue College. And we have really worked on sort of trying to talk about this. You know, it's obviously an issue close to my heart, you all know that, somebody in recovery myself, but trying to, you know, get people to talk about it because the more we talk about it, the more people are willing to accept help. And the stats show that 90% of people suffering from a drug or alcohol addiction will not seek treatment because of the stigma, they're afraid of the stigma associated with the disorder. And it's claiming too many lives for us to take it seriously. So we've tried here an anti-stigmatization campaign. Don't count us out. Somebody who makes the right choice to turn their life around and quit the addiction can be enormously effective and lead not just a productive life, but kind of shot out of a cannon and do great things in their life moving forward. So we're trying to de-stigmatize people that make the right choice. We shouldn't beat down people who finally make the right choice to change their lives, in my opinion. Talk a little bit about crime. We got crime. This is statewide, it's not just specific to King County. Our shots fired data obviously continues to go up. There's a lot of, some initiatives focusing on gun violence. Homicides and murders have gone up 73% since 2019. And so you'll see the data in terms of medical examiner homicides in the county. That's a lot. You could see the statistics under violence, but last year, the state of Washington tied an all-time record in terms of number of murders. And so the trend line is not good. There's a, I mean, it's a super complicated, multifaceted reason for all of this. Over the, over the many last 10 years, King County has actually funded our law enforcement. We just have vacancies, which we can talk a little about, a little bit more about that we need to fund. So we've, we've sort of done what we needed to, but we still have roughly 100 vacancies that we need to fill. That is on the law enforcement side of the equation. And I will just speak very generally. I used to run, I co-authored and ran President Bush's National Effort to Fight Gun Violence, called Project Safe Neighborhoods. And it really takes multi-pronged approach, right? You've got to have a public health approach on it, you've got to have a law enforcement approach on it, you've got to have things like, you know, trigger locks and gun safes and a whole bunch of different systems that work together to try and reduce the incidence of gun violence in your community, including prosecuting those individuals who are using guns in violent crimes. Little bit nuance about the criminal justice system right now, and I'm looking at, these are pending murder and homicide cases. This is just, you know, when that COVID pandemic hit all of us, counties and cities, the local governments, you know, it's a tidal wave that came in and it slowly washed out over a couple of years. And when we saw that tidal wave recede, we saw the damage that was left. And this is an example of the challenges in terms of the Superior Court backlog on these felony cases. And so right at the pandemic, it went really off the chart. The courts weren't meeting, there were some reasons for all of that. Prosecutor was still working hard. But if you see the backside of that 23, we are starting, I think, to make a difference in getting that back under control. And I do see that as a positive prosecutor focusing on the most significant cases like murder or homicide, but that is progress and something that we shouldn't discount. We're on the right track now on this. It wasn't good for several years. Public safety, this is hiring and retention of officers. I spoke to that just a little while ago. You'll see that we had some significant problems with retention and hiring for a lot of different reasons I won't get into. Patty Coltindle, who is now the appointed sheriff, she's very good at what she does, in my opinion, and she is, she's working on changing that. Again, I'm starting to see data that is encouraging, going in the right direction. You'll see some sheriff office FTEs for gun violence, significant grants in that area that we think is part of the tools and the toolbox we need to take on these challenges, including gun violence. Let's see, public safety continued. The biennial budget did fund a new helicopter for the sheriff's office, a park ranger program, which is important, another million for funding to support increased workload, associated body worn camera requirements, the stuff you have to do. The PA requested some additional support staff for videos because videos become something that can be publicly requested, not just in a public disclosure request, but also subpoenaed and part of discovery and prosecution. King County budget, King County is addressing about $100 million revenue shortfall in our general fund next year, the '25-'26 budget. I suspect it tracks similarly with some of the stuff that maybe a lot of cities are facing. And so we're going to, we're going to have to watch that. A lot of this depends on the economic activity, sales, and property tax revenues. So we'll see what it ultimately ends up being when we actually have to take a vote on it this fall. So we're in a budget year right now. We should pass a budget out in November, but I think it is going to be a little bit tight, a little bit tight year as we have to rein in spending this year. Lot of community investments here. Let's see, who's in that picture?
He buried the lead.
What's that?
He buried the lead, nine millions, halfway down the slide.
On the last slide?
Halfway down the slide.
Nine million, $247,500 to support his Cougar Mountain Connections project. That's right. Councilmember Balducci authored a joint letter with me to preserve Conservation Futures Committee. That was fun. Save Coal Creek, that was really cool. Dave Hamilton, I know that was important to you too. So anyway, bunch of little stuff that, you know, we're just trying to get that, you know, these are tax dollars that came out, but that was a fun project. That's a big project. I hope that the city of Bellevue closes that deal and makes it work. It's been an honor. Also on flood control district projects, and Mayor Robinson has been effective and persistent in her continued advocacy for the infrastructure improvements here. So we did get 6.8 million for the Factoria Boulevard storm conveyance improvement projects. And as I was driving down Bellevue Way and saw the little issue, the public work issue today, I thought Lynn needs, has a request for additional for the Factoria Boulevard. So I will not forget that.
Thank you.
Okay?
It is real.
It's about two and a half million if I stand corrected. So we'll continue to work on the various community investments.
Thank you.
Maybe we'll take questions if, whatever the mayor would like to do in terms of questions.
Would you like to go ahead and then we'll do questions to both of you, Councilmember Balducci? How's it feel to be back in Bellevue council chambers? Fantastic. If you don't know, Councilmember Balducci was mayor for two years here, council member for many years. Thank you. Yeah, I had a very, I had a déjà vu experience leaving the house after work was over and sort of racing down the hill to get here on time and feeling that familiar sense of anxiety about getting to the council chambers on time on Monday night. It's really great to see you all, new council members, Hamilton, Malakutian, it's so nice to see you sitting there. And of course, Councilmember Zion, who holds the seat that I used to hold and is holding it quite well. Thank you, Mayor, Deputy Mayor. All right. The goods, I think it's lovely to have this presentation together. The downside is you get two of us. And so I'll try to go quickly. You'll also notice there's a bit of a different style when it comes to slides. So just starting out the same way, so you know where I'm sitting this year, where I will have the most influence on the county council, I continue to be chair of the Regional Water Quality Committee, where I serve with Councilmember Lee, who's a very active and engaged member. And this year, we will be focusing heavily on the future needs of the system in the long term and what that means in terms of rates and construction, because it is a huge system, about 200 miles, I want to say, of pipes throughout King County that we could not survive together as in society without those, that system working. This year, I chair the King County Council Committee of the Whole. where we will focus on issues like gun violence. Uh, and I continue to serve as Chair of Sound Transit System Expansion Committee, more on that in a moment. And, uh, Chair of the Affordable Housing Committee of the Growth Management Planning Council. After, uh, redistricting District Six, as Councilmember Dunn said, did shift up a little bit. We also shifted down a little bit. It's, uh, an irony of redistricting that when your population grows, your district shrinks. So mine got smaller, a little more manageable, now covers all of downtown Bellevue, downtown Redmond, and downtown Kirkland. So it's a pretty awesome combination of interests altogether. Um, and I represent about two-thirds of Bellevue. Uh, topically, just a few topics to cover tonight on, uh, transportation. I know you all were, as I was, rather disappointed to learn that the, uh, there were workmanship challenges on the I ninety bridge as we build light rail across the lake. Uh, and so, starting a little over a year ago, I've been pushing, uh, to open up the sys- the part of the system that's ready to go. And we are this close to having an announcement date. Uh, I was hoping to have it by tonight. We do not yet have a date. But you undoubtedly have heard, as I have, uh, the reports of trains all over town, because they're practicing at five-minute headways. So during certain times of the day, there's just trains everywhere. And I look forward to seeing all of you at a great big celebration. We also don't have an announcement on where, but I'm gonna guess that it'll be probably right outside this building. We'll see. Hope to see you all there, no matter where it may be. Um, in other regional transportation news, uh, I guess I should say on Sound Transit, the, the, the goal and the target still is to open the entire line in mid-two thousand twenty-five. And we will be bird dogging that and making sure to report to you as, as we make progress towards that date, because really the whole system will only balance and work well when, when it connects together. On, uh, regional, uh, transportation front, at the PSRC, we, uh, have been working very hard. And, and I, I finished my term as president of the Puget Sound Regional Council, uh, year before last. But, uh, we've made a big push on road safety, equity, and climate. And this year, just a few weeks ago, as a matter of fact, we've made, uh, a lot of great progress on these two topics. What you will see going forward this year is that we are gonna put our money where our mouth is at Puget Sound Regional Council. Almost three-quarters of a billion dollars in federal pass-through funding each two-year cycle. And, uh, we just agreed to a funding framework that will prioritize safety by requiring that every jurisdiction start to use a safe system approach to their transportation system. Bellevue is way ahead of the curve on this. You've had your Vision Zero, which is a form of safe system approach for many years now, making huge progress. It serves frankly as an incredible example to the four-county region. Now we're gonna use that big, uh, federal pass-through funding to leverage road safety, uh, planning in all the jurisdictions of all of the four-county region. And we're gonna save a lot of lives as we start to see those, uh, systems come into play. On equity, we did a, an, a pri- a pilot project, put aside six million dollars in the, uh, last year's funding to see how that could work and determine that, in fact, what we really need to do, although there were some great projects to make sure that transportation systems are helping and not harming local communities that need them the most. Um, what it's really gonna end up doing is we're going to, uh, on advice of our Equity Advisory Council that implemented that pilot, try to bake equity into all of our criteria for all of our buckets, not just have one particular set aside. So that will be work that we do, uh, in the coming year as well. Uh, on housing and homelessness, I don't think I need to report to you all about this. I think you're keenly aware, but, uh, a top issue is going to be implementing the countywide planning policies via your comprehensive plan and the comprehensive plans of every city, uh, city and county in the state, all due this year. Um, probably also keenly aware that at the Affordable Housing Committee, where Mayor Robinson is a very active and engaged member, we worked through the House Bill twelve-twenty affordability requirements and came up with a way to segregate out, uh, the various housing needs at every level of affordability to each city in the county and the county. We all got targets. You have a target. We have a target. Everybody does. Um, they're pretty eye-popping. I put these up here just for, uh, just for demonstrative purposes. But the truth is, because we have fallen so far behind in providing enough housing, um, the gaps are almost entirely in the lower ends of affordability. So most cities, in fact, some cities, their entire, uh, housing target is gonna be taken up with trying to find a way to provide for affordability in their, in their, um, jurisdictions. I look forward to working on this with you at King County on our own comprehensive plan, but also through the collaborative, uh, effort we put together at the Affordable Housing Committee. Each jurisdiction will submit by agreement. We all worked on this together. This body includes, uh, representatives of all the cities of King County through the SCA in Seattle. Uh, will submit their housing elements to the Affordable Housing Committee. We will review them and provide feedback, guidance, maybe suggestions. And then, uh, in five years after they've been adopted, we're gonna do this again, look at all the housing elements and see how they're actually working. So it's a supportive collaborative method of accountability. Uh, just a quick update on the King County Regional Homelessness Authority. In addition to, uh, we've been in a building phase, as I think you know. Uh, I want to report out, we now have, both, both Councilmember Dunn and I have served on this body. He served in the first few years. I took over, uh, in the most, more recent years. The, um, we now have, uh, robust finance head and, and finance department. And that's very important, because mainly this is a pass-through agency that gets a lot of money and puts, gives it to the providers who actually provide the services. We are hiring for a permanent director. We just recently, uh, hired an interim director. And there will be a lot of work this year on outreach, on sub-regional planning, which has been in process but should complete this year. And eventually we're moving to rebid the entire services system to make sure that the providers are doing what is wanted by the jurisdictions that are funding so that we can get the results we want to see. A lot to be done there. Um, so on regional safety and stability, you heard an awful lot about this. The only thing I would add on gun violence prevention is there is a new collaborative regional space called the Executive Leadership Advisory Group, I hope I got that right, on gun violence prevention. It's been convened by the county executive, the mayor of Seattle, and the Sound Cities Association. We had our first big kickoff meeting a few weeks ago, going to try to build a more regional coordination and urgency. There's a lot of regional efforts. Uh, Councilmember Dunn mentioned several of them. Another one is the, uh, our county prosecutor has assigned a gun violence prevention deputy whose entire job is to work both on the prosecution side and in the community outreach side to try to prevent gun violence. And I just put this, uh, this graphic up here, because the PAO does, they call it the shots fired report. It comes out, uh, every quarter. And, uh, the most recent quarter is the second quarter of two thousand twenty-three. And there's a ton of really interesting data. I put this here because we're here in Bellevue and I wanted to see how, you to see how Bellevue shows up on the most recent report. We're not immune to this crisis, but certainly there are a lot of, there, there are really major areas where there's just gunshots almost every day. So, um, we will be, uh, working on the Crisis Care Center levy implementation. I think, uh, you all are familiar with that. That is the effort to build five crisis care centers. So these are diversion centers for people in mental health crisis, where law enforcement or ambulances or others can bring folks that isn't jail or a hospital. Uh, the implementation plan is already with the council. It's been transmitted. We're having our first, uh, committee hearing later this week. And it will come to the Regional Policy Committee, where Councilmember Stokes has been an active member and will help to shape that policy. I put care enclosure on this report, just because you might have read about it in the newspaper. There'll be plenty of time to talk about this. It is a long range. It's not even a plan yet. It's a, a set of recommendations. You may recall the county executive committed to close our juvenile detention facility by two thousand twenty-five. We are now in two thousand twenty-four. And there's been a lot of work with community, a lot of good academic study, a lot of work with stakeholders in the criminal justice system to try to figure out what would it look like to close the juvenile detention facility. In fact, we have seen a tremendous decrease in the number of youth who are in that facility. Many years ago, we would have an average population of two hundred youth every night. Uh, in my time, when I was the jail director, we were in the low, below a hundred eighties, nineties, seventies. And, uh, in, during COVID, it got down as low as the teens. So we've seen a really major dip. It's bounced back a bit. I think we're at, uh, forty or so average per night. But it's a very small number for a very big county. And every study that you look at will show you that incarceration is associated with worse outcomes. So if we can find ways to keep young people successful, on the right path, not harming one another, not harming themselves, that is the path to success. You get fewer victims, less recidivism. Uh, this report has many, uh, different ideas in it. They have yet to be fully vetted. It has put off the recommendation to close the juvenile facility. Uh, there's no new date, but I think the target that has been mentioned is maybe two thousand twenty-eight. And a lot to be done. Uh, I don't wanna talk about the, I'll answer any questions you have. There's a lot to be done. Uh, the main, uh, the main takeaway is we have to build the systems for prevention before we close the reaction space, because the, you know, as long as there's crime happening, we need to have a way to react to the, the public safety needs. Uh, and I won't read these to you, but there's, uh, we also have done in District Six a fair amount of community investments in the last, uh, few years. The one I want to point out is in the flood control district with, uh, outstanding support from Chair Dunn. We were able to get over four hundred thousand dollars to advance, uh, design on the Willow Moore rebuild of the weir, uh, to, I believe, sixty percent design. And we're looking at the, um, uh, remote dynamic weir, which means it can move and change based on conditions, and it doesn't need somebody to go out there and do it with a, with a tool. Uh, this was an idea that actually came from the community of people who live down on the lake. And we took it up and studied it and found it had really good results. So we should hear more about that later this year. And, um, oh, sorry, there's more. Uh, we passed a very large arts and culture levy last year and, uh, look forward to working with you on that. I think that the, um, Bellevue-based arts and culture sector will do very well by this levy. And it will help to really stabilize and support a, um, uh, more educational and cultural experiences for all ages and walks of life here in Bellevue. And you may have noticed, as you drive up and down Northeast Eighth Street and you drive under the light rail station that's gonna cross that street, that there's a bridge. Very beautiful bridge, clad in special cladding. That is the first, uh, project of the Japanese-American legacy project. It's now a five oh one C three called Eson Bellevue. Uh, that is an initiative I, I just have to brag a little bit. Uh, I got very, uh, concerned about how we were not honoring the history of Bellevue here, with the good and the bad, and learning from it. And so I went around and talked to people and this, I mean, I don't take credit for the bridge, but this is the result of bringing it up. So let me encourage you, bringing it up is a good thing to do. Um, I hope to have an opening scheduled very soon on this. It's, there's art and, um, educational, uh, boards that will explain what's happened here. And it's, it's just a beautiful, uh, piece of infrastructure for the East Rail that will also, I think, uh, enrich the Bellevue environment that it's in. That's it. Okay, oof, please take it down.
Thank you both so much.
Tried to go fast. I failed.
I'm just gonna start us off really fast, uh, thanking you both. Um, Councilmember Dunn, you did not mention the contribution to Bellevue Art Museum at the end of last year. And I know Councilmember Balducci, you also promised some for the following year. So thank you both for supporting BAM. Um, also, I, I would work very hard with Brad Feingood, um, to try to do work to stem the opioid crisis. And the interesting thing with your numbers, it shows the, the, um, amount of overdose deaths increasing significantly, but if you look at the amount of people using, it stayed pretty much the same. And that underscores the, what you're saying about just what a, what a death crisis it is. One pill, you know, people just don't even have a chance when they make that one mistake. And so, um, really significant effect of the same amount of users. So it's really scary. Um, and then Councilmember Balducci, thank you for all your fight for getting the two-line open in Bellevue. Um, I heard it was gonna be at City Hall, so I don't know. I thought that was a public thing.
Haven't seen a public announcement yet, and I think I probably made one by sitting here, but.
I might have helped you. And then, um, the list of community investments just underscores your devotion to the community. So thank you both so much. Any other comments or questions? Yes, Councilmember Newenhouse.
Thank you, uh, mayor. Uh, thank you both for being here, uh, tonight. Just a couple of quick questions. Thank you, Dave. Um, on the, um, uh, on the, uh, King County Homelessness Authority, uh, you had mentioned kind of a rebuilding year. And I was just curious on the, on, on the list of priorities as part of that rebuilding, I didn't hear data, which I thought was, they were on the right track in terms of building that database and really understanding, um, how, you know, a, a greater holistic level, how many people are suffering or experiencing homelessness in our area? And then having, uh, an understanding of where they've been, what services they may have, uh, received, if they had an opportunity to get housing, what happened if they didn't? Is still, is that still a priority for, for, or are we really concentrating on getting the basics uh, put in place first with that director and then building up from there? But I just thought that's such a key piece for the entire region to understand the problem a lot better.
Thank you. That's a, a really good question. And I, and I certainly didn't, uh, cover every activity at KCRHA. Um, the data is very important part of KCRHA. And I think one of the success stories of KCRHA actually has been the way they have collected information and data about the service side. So there's a, there is now a database of every single per, every single organization providing services within, uh, King County in the homelessness sector and a lot of information about those providers, and it's kept up to date. And that is just something that you couldn't find before, so in the public can access.
Right.
We're doing the one, uh, I don't know what they call it these days. It used to be the one-night count, the point-in-time count, uh, right now. In fact, there are people doing the count this, this week or last week. And so we should see the numbers from that shortly. And, uh, there has been a, a lot of analysis about the various needs of the people. Um, a couple of efforts, uh, one was, uh, that there's more of an interview approach to talking to people in homelessness as we're doing the counts, not just counting their heads, but finding out what caused their homelessness, why, you know. So there was a little bit of, uh, last year, there was an attempt to do this in a way that was, um, qualitative was the word. And, uh, that, we found that those results were not really replicable. And so that, we have shifted that approach this year. But yes, I mean, there's a lot of data being collected and there should be current data that comes out now. Needs to be said that we've not found a way to accurately, fully account for this population of people because they're hard to find.
Right.
And I'm, you know, so you go out to the places where you think homeless people may be and try to find them. You invite them to come to see you and provide incentives for them to come and see you. I think we're still probably missing a lot of people. But what we do, hope to do is hit a, a methodology that works well, that gives us a reasonable number to plan to, and then to repeat that methodology year after year so the changes are meaningful, so you can see if it's going up or going down and what, what's happening. But yes, absolutely, we're not gonna lick this problem without good data.
Yeah, exactly.
And so I think that's, uh, really important as well.
No, thank you. I'm glad to hear that's still a priority. Uh, and then one quick question for Councilmember Dunn. Um, really appreciate all the, uh, work you've done to center and kind of elevate the, um, the crisis that is, well, the whole King County Council, but, um, elevate the public health crisis that is, uh, fentanyl. And the, the numbers are shocking and distressful. And I'm just wondering if you could, um, give, from your perspective, um, drill down just a little bit in terms of how the crisis care centers are going to interact with those public health centers a little bit more. Uh, and how is that going to reduce, um, hopefully reduce the amount of use of fentanyl? Get people, more people into recovery? How, how, how is that gonna work? And do we already have some metrics or numbers that we're trying to, um, uh, work towards in terms of number of reductions of overdose deaths, et cetera?
Well, yeah, it's a great question. It's, it's super, I mean, it's, it's a complex problem, just like homelessness is. And I've come to this belief that there are multiple pathways to recovery, uh, that exist. Um, uh, this council, our council passed, uh, unanimously, uh, a, a needs assessment and review to determine whether there is public health and addiction infrastructure that exists and what the shortfall is. And that full report has not been sent yet back by the executive. But we know there is a significant shortfall in inpatient and outpatient treatment facilities in King County. The five crisis care centers will help in that, and they're gonna triage a lot of that information. But we still don't have the beds we need. Uh, we did pass a Harborview bond measure that added beds, so that's a significant improvement. But, I mean, you have to have inpatient, you have to have outpatient, you have to have opportunities for those who contact, uh, the legal system for the first time. There are, there is a program that isn't used well enough that somebody can choose treatment as opposed to, uh, some form of incarceration or arrest. We need to expand on those programs, so we're just getting going. But it is a big one. And, 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 you know, there is a law enforcement component. There's a treatment component. There aren't nearly enough, uh, substance use counselors, uh, in the area as well. So all of that infrastructure needs to be built up. We can't arrest our way out of a problem either, so. So I think we, we, I've seen this as a federal prosecutor where, for example, MDMA and ecstasy was, was spiking just like this and with some intense enforcement initiatives, they were able to turn that around. And I hope that we can get to a point where if we can just get fentanyl down alone, that would make a huge difference. So that's where we're going and we'll hopefully make a big difference, but the stats don't lie.
Thanks for all your efforts.
Councilmember Lee, followed by Councilmembers Stokes and Councilmember Zion.
Thank you. I want to thank both Councilmembers Balducci and Dunn for your long time personal and community engagement with Bellevue, especially Councilmember Dunn. I knew him when he was playing Little League Baseball and I was coaching, I think.
I'm still playing.
Yeah, I'll, I'll say thank you for, for what you have done. I just wanted to ask, you know, a couple of questions, but let's ask Councilmember Dunn first, because I believe that, you know, in order to have common solutions, we have to work together. To work together, we have to communicate. And what you have done today, coming to talk to us, that's really communication, so I appreciate that. We hope we can continue this process. And you mentioned about mental health. I have a question about youth mental health, particularly with immigrant population. A lot of immigrant, don't let people know about it. It's a embarrassment, it's a shame. So as a result, and we see a lot of young people, you know, after the, kind of high school, go to college, they have problems and we don't see those statistics. So I just want to mention that, see how can we have data, you know, we're talking about really finding out what's causing, you know, the future problems. So that's one. Mayor told me to be precise, so I'm going to ask many more, just pointer to you. Second is, I want to compliment you for your flood control work. And we went to the Factoria flood control, you helped bring a lot of money to it and we are working on it now because we realized a few years back how much Factoria flooded. So I think because of what you have done, we appreciate it. Thanks, that's, thanks. And finally, you realize, you know, having lived here for, what, 50, a long time anyway, the city has become so much diverse and the population is, you know, a lot more. And so we, we have a very diverse population here from different culture, the countries. So I appreciate you for supporting our cross-cultural center project, which you did mention. So I hope you can continue to do so and hopefully we will have a community that actually can solve problems together, you know, so that we can really have real solutions. So, so thank you to look at the mental health situation and all the rest you've done. So Councilmember Balducci, want to thank you for serving Bellevue as a long time, you know, council member and former mayor. And we, we, you have gained very good experience from us, so we, we like that. And so we feel very lucky that you are serving us. The biggest thing I want to give you is taking over and really, you know, making the RWQC, Regional Water Qualities Committee, something that can really address the big issue facing the whole citizens of the King County, the ratepayers. Because we don't have a manager and have a control over the situation, we'd be surprised to figure out how to handle. If we could, if we can handle it, it has a great impact with the environment. The fish is not going to live, the water is going to be bad. We no longer can get clean water by just turning on the tap and the wastewater doesn't go straight, you know, to be processed. So it's very important. So I appreciate it. And I think this is something, I appreciate you working on it, we need to really put a lot of attention on. So thanks. And I, also I want to mention that you, you know, in order to do some of these things, we have to have a, a good, healthy economy. So I serve on the Economic Development Board, PSRC, and that's a very particular body. It's not quite, you know, a PSRC, but it's kind of separate. But I feel that, you know, we, we develop policies and we provide to Washington State Legislature sometimes, so hope to, we can get federal dollar, you know, EDA money to do some of the work. Basically they have a very good resource, study and analyze and so on. But we, we would like to have PSRC perhaps to help us to develop more legislative priority. So right now, I don't think we have a very close working relationship, but we would like to have more attention, such as your transportation and other policies as well. That'd be very good for us. And finally, I think Councilmember Nguyen-House has mentioned about information, data in providing services regarding to my, to my interest is affordable housing. I think we cannot have one shoe fits all solutions. Every community has different needs and different community suggestions and ideas. So I think we need to be a little bit more specific and more data-driven, see what kind of housing we really need. You know, you mentioned, well, zero to 30 low, real low income. And for Bellevue, perhaps, you know, the proportion could be somewhat, I don't know, different, but it has to be probably based on real data and that's just what's in our community and what is appropriate. And of course, helping others is another thing.
Come on.
Yeah, we may not, we might, we might need to, to have the need, but it's important, it's a regional problem. So we need to be able to support and help and contribute. But I think we need to do it with, with the data, with information, with knowledge. So, so thank you very much and I appreciate your being here.
Thank you. I just want to say one quick thing.
Oh, sure.
Okay.
We're really running the Bellevue playbook at the Regional Water Quality Committee. The, the city has got a, a history of good long-range planning, good strategic planning and responsible budgeting around the sewer system. And the people in place, Sumamish Plateau, Commissioner Lloyd Warren, former director here, Andrew Lee of, who runs Seattle Public Utilities, formerly of Bellevue, myself as the chair, Councilmember Lee on the, we, Bellevue's taken over the world of wastewater and we're going to fix it.
Great. I like that. Thank you.
Councilmember Lee, I just want to say thanks. It's exciting, this is an exciting city. It's growing rapidly. It's the largest majority-minority city in the state of Washington. And I, I will say that, you know, as you mentioned, the, particularly the youth mental health issue, I mean, that is a very significant challenge. You're seeing the suicide rate for teenage girls, for example, shoot through the roof. You know, it's an increasingly complex time to grow up as a kid, you know? And sometimes I wonder if the cell phones and social media are, you know, one of the biggest problems we're facing right now. So the crisis care centers focusing on youth, making sure that those programs are outreach into the various communities within Bellevue, I think is critical. So we'll continue to work on that. And then reestablishing the Sumamish, Sumamish River, Councilmember Balducci's leadership there on Willamore and keeping those lake levels in Sumamish constant during flood events is also important. Thanks for your leadership, we'll keep working on it.
Thank you. I'm glad I have some influence on your growing up, but now look at the example you're providing us. Thank you.
Councilmember Stokes.
Thank you.
Well, it's a hard act to follow, but.
It's a hard act to follow, but appreciate the comments on this. And what I wanted to say was, one thing is, it's really great, we have, we have two really, really good people working for us in, in King County. And you, you have different ideas on things sometimes, you do different ways in your, what, how you work on it, but you work together and we're so lucky to have two really, really excellent council members. And, you know, you, you know, there's so many things we could talk about. One thing I wanted to mention, also, I'm really glad for the light rail. There's another guy sitting here over there, Kevin Wallace and I actually worked with you years ago, like in 2012, to get this thing done. And we're really excited to actually take that first ride. So that's great.
I'm going to be riding it all day. I hope you'll join me. We'll stop off at the pump house, it's going to be a great day.
But it's, but it's, it's, it's the continuing meaning to, getting to make it go is both of you do that. You don't just give up when something gets kind of in a mess at some point and everything. I appreciate that. Couple of things I wanted to say is that, one of the things I really appreciate is, you know, working on things in outside and with Coal Creek as an example, and your response on that. Your response on vital outdoor experiences and things that help, help us in the different parks, all those pieces too, they're, they're very important. All the buildings and everything are great, but you, we need those parks and we need to, to recognize and keep our past and also look forward to the future. And I appreciate both of you actually being very active on that too. And, you know, there's so many other things to talk about, but one of the things that is helpful in your coming to us in meetings and having, not only the council itself, but the public understands what the King County Council actually does. It's amazing. And just to listen to the small part of the whole piece, very big parts, smaller, it's really amazing how much is done and how much we are getting done. And what's exciting for us is we're a big part of that, working with it. So, and part of it is because you work with us. And so I, I really appreciate your coming and hope you come back again sooner than, than later and talk to us about this and appreciate everything you've done, both here, working with the city and continue to work with us, but working with the county. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Stokes.
Councilmember Zion.
Yes, I too thank you both for your leadership and you're so complimentary in terms of the, the scope of all the work that you do together and, and it really matters. I mean, thank you for the starter line, East Rail. We still have a funding gap for that segment over I-90, so we'll continue to work together to, to bring that over the finish line, the Vision Zero and the Complete Streets and making sure that the same things we're doing in Bellevue is going to be in all the projects because our cities are all connected and so safety is, is everywhere. And the money for the Coal Creek connection, thank you for that. And your advocacy, I really appreciate the community safety pieces that you talked about with the fentanyl, one pill can kill and the, the gun violence. Heard you, Councilmember Dunn, talk about trigger locks, gun safes. You didn't say drug buyback programs, but I think that that's something that the county is also doing some work in, just really focusing on the kind of prevention so that instead of dealing with the outcomes that are not working, going all the way back and, and really working on prevention and investing money in those, I think that's going to go a long ways towards helping us with our fentanyl crisis, our gun violence. Love the fact that we're going to have the doors open for science, heritage and arts. And I hope that as you look at allocations for Bellevue, that, you know, we have a lot of needs as well. And sometimes when we look at equity, we, we may find that funds aren't actually necessarily coming as much to Bellevue. So I'm just going to put a plug there to, to make sure that as, as you're working on that, that, that those things are happening. The, the King County Regional Homelessness Authority, that whole notion of no wrong doors and, and putting more investments into that to also prevent people from going into homelessness, I think will be really important. I echo Councilmember Lee about the mental health piece, especially with our youth. And I wonder, it's, it's, it's both the, the loneliness in one sense and then the bullying that we're starting to see in schools in the other sense, whether there's more that could be done to support programs for our youth. And I think loneliness is actually for our seniors as well. So some of the funding from the seniors levy and, and what could be done there. And then lastly, my, my question is, I saw the piece about the, the budget shortfall for '25 and '26. And certainly I'm curious about as you look at how to, how to shrink that gap in the shortfall, how you're looking at what investments might be a little bit slower and then how we make sure that the, the great work that you've been doing to support our community, how we make sure it keeps going with the shortfall and where the, where the money might need to be taken, a haircut and how it might impact Bellevue.
Very, very briefly, because we've taken up an awful lot of your time, but I will say that the challenge with the budget is that the, this is a whole presentation in and of itself, but the shortfalls tend to show up in our general fund because most of the other funds have dedicated funding sources. And when the general taxes go down or don't keep up with cost inflation, that's where the hole hits. And general fund covers 70-plus percent of it is, is public safety, it's courts, jails, sheriff's office. So the remaining small bit of that, and, and those things are all required, we must do those, we must provide those services. So this, what's remaining in the general fund tends to be on the chopping block every time and it's no secret, it's public health clinics, domestic violence and, and civil legal aid programs. I mean, so if we can't come up with a way to fix that hole some other way through a change in revenue or something else, that is what you are most likely to see, unfortunately. We can't take money from the sewer system, it's not legally allowed to take it and, you know, take a haircut out of there to put into human services programs or the bus system or any place except the general fund. And I did want to add on, on a brighter note, you mentioned, and, and I agree completely and I, and, and my colleague agrees completely, that we expect that the doors open program will show up in terms, vastly increased investments everywhere and especially right here. Yeah, he's right here. And so the one big change that the council made to the proposal when it came to us for approval was we put in an amendment that required that 25% of that levy go to places outside of the big cultural hub in Seattle. So plenty will go there, but a minimum of 25% needs to be outside of Seattle and so.
Significantly more than that as well.
Correct. That's a floor.
You know, and there's always a little bit, just to add on, I mean, I agree with most of what my colleague says, we always have some, you know, spirited disagreements, which is good for democracy, but, you know, there's always a little bit of, of fat you can cut within a budget. The question is, are you cutting into bone and how do you handle that? We'll see. Well, you know, having learned through this, economic forecasts can change quite a bit and surprised to see the, the job added over the last couple of days. So we'll see where we're at and we'll make those tough, we'll make those tough choices. But doors open is going to be a, a really good thing for the city of Bellevue, I think in particular.
Okay.
Glad to support that.
Councilmember Hamilton, followed by Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you so much for coming out. I have learned just in my month on council, how important it is to have good colleagues and to be able to count the two of you as such good colleagues. The inspiration and collaboration from both of you is really, really helpful. So thank you for that. A little thank you as well for all the park support, certainly something near and dear to my heart. I think that Councilmember Nguyen-House talked about the data and I think that's really important too, so that we all, you know, here at the city and our stakeholders, get an idea of what that data looks like and, you know, what we have, we can use. And the better it is, of course, that's always preferred. So I appreciate that. I wanted to ask Councilmember Balducci if you could talk about Health Through Housing and we haven't heard, maybe, I at least haven't heard a ton about that lately and just kind of curious where it's at and is there a little push or pull we can do somewhere or?
Yeah. Thank you for that question. And so for folks watching, Health Through Housing is the county's program where we purchased underutilized hotels throughout King County during COVID to turn them into permanent supportive housing. And there's two in this area. One is in what I like to call the Bellevue part of Redmond and the other is in the Bellevue part of Kirkland. And so now they're actually in Bellevue, but they're both very much part of the fabric of this community. The Redmond Health Through Housing, and I don't have an exact date, I will follow up with you, but is on track to be opened more or less along timelines that the, that our Department of Community and Human Services announced. I'll get that exact timeline to you, I don't have it on the tip of my tongue right now. But they're finishing up the work they need to do there. I know they've been hiring, they've got a contractor. Contractor had a community event in the hotel inviting people in to come and see it. So they're getting close to being ready to open. The Kirkland facility is a little different because that one was not set up to turn into the model of permanent supportive housing. Permanent supportive housing requires a number of things. The main problem with that building is that it is not sprinklered for long-term human occupancy, which is a life safety issue. And so they need to do significant remodeling and as long as we're in the building doing remodeling, they might as well do the other things we need to do. So it's on a longer time horizon, but also in, in process, very much in process.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
And then Councilmember Dunn, you know, we have our project going on in Factoria, which was a huge help to get that funding, certainly a great benefit to ratepayers here in Bellevue. So really appreciated. You know, in the flood control work, when you kind of look at, you know, rivers and controlling flooding, maybe in the more rural areas versus urban, I wonder if you might talk about, you know, how you make some of those decisions and what the future kind of looks like at the county. of looks like at the county and the flood control district, how you'd approach that?
Thanks for the question, yeah. So the annual tax revenue of the King County Flood Control District is about $68 million. We built up a significant revenue that we hadn't spent and Councilmember Ducci was wise to encourage us to get that unspent fund balance down, which we did. So the last several years, we spent about $100 million on projects. The projects are rated and scored by our Citizen Advisory Committee, which have elected officials from across the board, plus some experts, public works people. Anyway, we, the methodology that we use basically is designed to protect lives, you know, homes and structures, property. I think that we all understand that the urban risk takes priority where more lives are at stake. But if we can spend a little bit of money to fix a big problem, that's priority number one. If we have to spend a lot of money to spend to fix a sort of mid-level problem, we aren't going to do that. The good news is it's an annualized expenditure, so our time horizon is decades. So we have taken care of the really, really bad stuff already. We put almost $1 billion in infrastructure improvements there and we'll continue to make that. The good news is, is as we do these projects, look, if I can do a project, we can do a project for, say, $1 million. And for 1.1 million, we can put a spawning channel or a nice embankment, perhaps even a park. Let's add that in because I think it generates public support. And I would just say generally, this is the kind of program that Bellevue should continue to watch because it's the kind of program that your citizens are being taxed, who may not always get the same dollar back, which is why it's important to me and Councilmember Balducci that we fund projects in Coal Creek. We fund projects in Factory, Willamore, Lake Samamish. There's a lot of urban flooding around and that continues to be a priority so that Bellevue feels like it's an investment worth their time.
I want to make sure you heard that he said that I convinced him to not raise taxes for a number of years, just wanted to put that out there.
That's true. True story. True story.
Okay, thank you. And then Deputy Mayor, okay.
Thank you both for a great presentation and all of the great work you do at the King County. All of my colleagues asked all of the great questions. I just have 15 more questions. I'm going to ask them in a different format over a coffee later on to just educate myself, but just thank you for everything you are doing for us.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Great. Thanks for coming down tonight. Really appreciate your time and all the work that you do.
Thank you all so much.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, is there a motion to approve the agenda?
I move to approve today's meeting agenda.
Second?
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we are moving on to oral communications. I will let the city clerk talk to you, but I know we have more people wanting to talk than we have allotted time for. So you do not have to use all three minutes if you don't want to and if you don't need to, so that maybe more people will have a chance to speak. So city clerk, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, this evening there are 17 pre-registered speakers. So as the mayor said, that will exceed our 30 minutes of allotted time for oral communications. So I'll go over a few of the rules. And the first rule is that topics must relate to the City of Bellevue government. And persons speaking to items on tonight's agenda will be called first. And then if time remains, persons speaking to items that will come in front of the council will be called. The presiding officer is authorized in those categories to give preference to those who have not spoken to council within 60 days and who will be speaking on a topic that will come in front of council within 60 days. Speakers are allowed to speak up to three minutes and a maximum of three speakers will be allowed to speak to any one side of a particular topic. With that, I will call our first speaker, who is John Bruce. Mr. Bruce is joining us virtually. Mr. Bruce, can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Thank you.
Thank you. Your time begins now.
Thanks. I'll keep it short. Good evening, councilmembers. This is in regards to the Safe Pilot Program that's before you. My name is John Bruce. I'm the general manager of Hotel 116, next door to the proposed site for the program. And while we're not opposed to kind of the community's outreach efforts for homelessness, we do want to support a properly managed program. And we do have some concerns with the proposal that is before you. The first concern is the lack of a defined safety plan. We don't see the operator in their proposed budget. We don't see any sort of third-party security, any using trained security people. And we used to budget $90,000 to $100,000 a year for third-party security just at our hotel while the shelter was in place next door. We just don't see it in their budget and we would hope that they wouldn't be using in-house people that maybe aren't trained for the environment of the 20 vehicles that would be parked over there long-term. The second concern is the location being right under the sound transit light rail system. Back in August, just August 1st, just after midnight, there was a car fire that there was 30-foot flames and black smoke. And I encourage everyone to go on YouTube for the video that was posted under Bellevue Car Fire and look at this, you know, kind of things, potential things that could happen. You know, we would hate for a light rail system that we're very proud of and want to see have a disruption of, you know, toxic black smoke and just kind of the environmental concerns with that and potential long-term disruptions due to evaluations of damage. And so that location right under the light rail trussel is really concerning. So we just asked the council to maybe take a little more time to evaluate the viability of that location and whether or not that's the best location for this program. And thank you for your time.
Thank you. The next speaker on the list is Karina O'Malley, who I believe is joining us virtually. If you are, can you please raise your hand? Thank you. Ms. O'Malley, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Perfect. Your time begins now.
Thank you so much. My name is Karina O'Malley and I have been running a safe parking program for about 12 years in Kirkland with between 20 to 50 cars. There is a great need for more of these programs. I get calls every week for folks looking for a spot to park. We need more all through the county and I'm really pleased that Bellevue is moving forward to create more safe parking spaces for our neighbors who live in cars. My neighborhood, South Rose Hill, has experienced lots of great benefits from hosting a safe parking program. The guests in the program are eager to keep their parking lot home clean, safe and orderly. They have actually helped police several times by witnessing crimes perpetrated by our housed neighbors and being able to direct police in where the criminals have run off to. There was a carjacking in front of our church by somebody who lived in a house nearby to the parking lot and he was able to be apprehended because one of our guests was up late that night reading a book and saw him running through the parking lot. So I just wanted to highlight the benefits to the programs and I personally am happy to help with anything that the provider that you've contracted with or the city might need to make this a great program, wonderful for both the vehicle residents and their neighbors. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Kevin Wallace.
Hey there. It's nice to see all of you, especially Councilmember Newenhouse, who occupies the seat I used to occupy. And I wanted to come here tonight to talk about item 10 on your agenda, which is the extension of the permits that the building department is proposing. First of all, though, I know there was some Twitter eruption last weekend about the police department. I just wanted to take a minute to say how proud and grateful I am of the police department we have here in Bellevue. What a great job they do every day to protect us and keep us safe. And I also wanted to call your attention to the Bellevue Police Foundation Breakfast, which is coming up on April 6th at the Hyatt, 7 o'clock in the morning. All are welcome. I haven't yet been able to confirm if the Donut Wall will be back this year, but I'm hoping that it will. So really appreciate that opportunity. And then talking about the extension of the permits, first of all, that, you know, that issue is really critically important right now because we're having trouble in development world getting projects to pencil because of the interest rate increase. We'd all been used to cheap money and that has gone away. And so it's causing disruptions and really an impossible ability to get projects moving forward. 2023, there were no apartment units delivered in the City of Bellevue despite 11,000 employees from Amazon and, you know, really no better place in the country to tell the story about how to build an apartment building, but we just can't get them to pencil right now. So this new building code that's coming into effect on March 14th is going to have some very expensive and new requirements in it, particularly related to the energy code. And that is one thing, if you can plan for it in advance, but a lot of these projects, we're not able to do that. And so that's why this extension of six months is really critically important for those projects that have already submitted and are, you know, vested, submitted a complete permit, but are kind of caught by this financing issue. So I hope you'll support that. More broadly, I wanted to just compliment the city staff on this Bellevue Development Committee that has been created to provide a feedback loop. Rebecca Horner in particular, who came in and has started this effort, it's really been paying great dividends already. We've got the Bellevue Chamber Plush Committee working in dialogue with the city and this feedback has created opportunities like this one we're talking about now with the permit extensions. But also we have one coming to you. The staff will be bringing to you a fix to the noise control code that's been driving up some very expensive requirements in affordable, or excuse me, in housing development in downtown and other areas of the city. An issue with the Transportation Department, we were able to flag about transportation control flaggers that is now being fixed and is going to greatly reduce the cost in that area, too. So praise for this effort that's going on. Lots of work remains to be done, but I'm really grateful that it's in process. Thanks. It's great to see you all.
Thank you. The next speaker on the list is Kelly Mudge. Kelly, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Perfect. Your time begins now.
Thank you. And thank you for the opportunity to speak. I and we, my homeless friends, are grateful to have safe parking. I'm a formerly homeless person that utilized escape parking lots while waiting for housing, two and a half years, living in a car. We are like watchdogs, both for each other and our neighborhood. We don't want problems for ourselves or our neighbors and we don't want to be blamed for those issues. We basically have eyes on previous, in the previously empty lots that we live in. And this helps reduce partying in the space and just issues because we live there. We want to make sure it's safe, quiet, clean. And in the two parking lots that I lived in, one in Kirkland and one in Bellevue, we had issues with kids coming in and partying and throwing trash and being drunk and doing brodies in parking lots. And we, as guests of a safe parking lot, have worked with both Kirkland Police and Bellevue Police to help eliminate these issues. And a lot of these issues can be fixed by affordable housing, by the way. And that's just all I wanted to say. Safe parking lots are the bomb. Thank you so much for letting me speak tonight.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Abigail DeWes, who is also joining us virtually. Ms. DeWes, can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Can you hear me?
We can. Your time begins now.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor and councilmembers. I'm speaking tonight in favor of Agenda Item 10, which proposes an extension for six months of pending building permits and associated kind of other minor permits, clearing grade, et cetera. I just want to echo Kevin Wallace's comments a minute ago about the importance of this ordinance. It's really important that these permits are extended to reflect the moment that we're in, in the real estate market where projects are really hard to make work, but there have been really good investments in projects in the city so far that could be built if they're able to kind of make it through this financing cycle. So really hope that you will support this permit extension. The Bellevue Developer Committee has been a great sounding board, I think, for city staff with respect to this ordinance. We had an opportunity to hear about the ordinance, review the language ahead of time and provide some great feedback to the city. So I really appreciate the partnership that Rebecca and Greg and others at the city have shown in putting this ordinance together and bringing it before you tonight. Thank you so much.
Thank you. The next speaker is Mike Nickram.
Yeah, hello. Mike Nickram here in Newport Hills. And I'd like to comment on an incident that happened here in our city a couple of weeks ago, a couple Sundays ago, where Bellevue City Police failed to secure neighborhoods for what I think is the second time downtown has been under assault by terrorist organizations who really don't have our best interests at their hearts. And I read a book a couple summers ago called Guns, Steel and Germs by Jared Diamond. Wrote it some 25 years ago. It's a pretty interesting read. It's about 500 pages. Don't have the time to read it to you here, but I'll just grab one paragraph conclusion as far as what leads to a success and downfall of society and why I'm concerned that we're starting to go down that road of a downfall. He talks about the success of different countries that are side by side, sure, same ecological environment, but very different economies. He compares South Korea with North Korea, West Germany and East Germany, Dominican Republic and Haiti and Israel and its failed neighbors in the Arab community. He talks about why some countries succeed, other countries fail. His number one conclusion is that enforcing the effective rule of law, enforcement of contracts, protection of private property rights, having a lack of corruption and low frequency of assassinations, which unfortunately our nation experienced some 60 years ago. Unfortunately, I remember those days too well. Protection of private property rights and et cetera. So the effective rule of law has failed twice in the city over the last four years, cannot happen again. So I don't care what it takes. Next time somebody comes up into the intersections and protests and shuts downs our streets, you call out whoever you have to call out and you clear the streets. Regarding what happened a couple of weeks ago, prosecute Foley, who it was who was obstructing our commerce in our city, okay? Those yahoos should be going to prison, just as equal as the nitwits that invaded our capitals, you know, indiscriminately some three years ago. So I'm asking for the enforcement of rule of law in this city from this point forward. Thank you very much.
The next speaker is Michael Appleby.
Councilmembers, Mayor Robinson, thank you for the opportunity to share my thoughts on the recent protest in the City of Bellevue and also for the opportunity to ask for your accountability for this measure. I'll try to keep this short, but the reality is, is I've heard democracy is at stake. We've all heard that from the mainstream media. Well, it is. When the rule of law is not enforced, you have a two-tiered system, rules for thee, rules for me and not for thee. And I think that what happened is an abomination of our process. What I'd like to see and what I'm asking for is accountability as to why our police were not allowed to enforce the laws. Since when are unsanctioned protests where people get to close down roads, prevent safety vehicles from going down the street? prevent safety vehicles from going down the street, to preventing people from using their city? I'd like to ask for accountability. We have a mayor who is senior. We have an acting city manager, and you have a fairly new police chief. My question is, why wasn't the law enforced and that protest stopped and the roads opened? We have a very generous and liberal system to be able to hold legal protests with the proper permitting. So I'll keep it short, but I'm asking for accountability. Mayor Robinson specifically, as head of this council, what can we expect for accountability as to why the laws were not enforced, why the police did not act to open our roads, take those cars out of there? And how can we be sure that this will not happen again? We saw that in 2020, on one day, there were there were protests and they overtook Bell Square, they took over the downtown. But a few weeks later, when the police had advanced notice that Antifa was coming back, they mobilized and were able to enforce the laws and mitigate and take care of that situation. Speaking on behalf of myself and my neighbors, we'd like to see that there's accountability and assurances that this will not happen again. Thank you.
City manager, you are going to in your report be reporting back on this, correct?
Yes, I am.
Okay, and that's coming up next.
Thank you. The next speaker on the list is Leslie Geller, who's joining us virtually. Ms. Geller, can you hear me? Ms. Geller, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Thank you. Your time begins now.
Okay. Hello, council members. My name is Leslie Geller, an Eastgate resident. I'm speaking tonight in opposition to a land use amendment application by Lithia Real Estate to expand auto sales in Eastgate by demolishing a long-established community retail center, Sunset Village. This expansion would eliminate valuable retail space for community-oriented small businesses that serve as local gathering places in Eastgate and South Bellevue. Over the last month, more than 130 people wrote letters to the city in opposition to the project, and nearly 600 people signed an online petition asking the city to deny it. I assert that Lithia's application is flawed, both procedurally and substantively. First, it appears that Lithia received guidance during a pre-application conference that this proposal can proceed as an administrative amendment to the existing conditional use permit. Per the land use code, the administrative amendment process is appropriate when the intent and purpose of the original approval is maintained. However, this does not hold true for Lithia's new project. The 2004 permit was approved with the explicit intention to keep the small businesses in Sunset Village while allowing Michael's Toyota to take over a vacated tenant space. Thus, Lithia's proposal for a new dealership is outside the intent and purpose of the original approval that preserves spaces for small businesses. Secondly, the proposed dealership is substantively incompatible with the city's comp plan. So it's outside the scope of even a new conditional use permit. The current comp plan, the Eastgate SubArea Plan, and draft updated policies for Bellevue 2044 all repeatedly call for preservation and enhancement of neighborhood retail and mixed-use centers, including an Eastgate. Lithia's proposed changes are so significant that it changes the function of a mixed-use community business zone to a general commercial zone, which is the only land use district in Bellevue that outright allows auto sales. A change of this magnitude should be routed as a site-specific comp plan amendment during the city's annual CPA process. Finally, from a land use planning perspective, the city should consider neighborhood business needs within the context of upcoming changes in Eastgate. The planned aquatic center, as well as new housing, will bring additional residents and visitors who will expect nearby community retail services. I urge the city to consider the far-reaching impact that the loss of this gathering place would have on the residents of Eastgate and adjacent neighborhoods for years and decades to come. Our advocacy group will be following up with a formal letter to council and other city decision makers. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker on the list is Autumn Meadows.
Hello, my name is Autumn Meadows. I'm a marginalized member of the community. I'm multiracial indigenous by 20% Mexican-American, and I have disabilities, including complex PTSD from repeated prolonged child abuse that included violent sexual assault, physical abuse, and psychological abuse. As an adult, I was shoved into housing-first projects in Seattle where me and my family endured stabbing, shootings, robberies, prostitution, and violent drug dealers. This only worsened and deepened my trauma. I escaped Seattle to find relatives safely in Bellevue, only to watch Bellevue in the past four years degrade towards Seattle. Normally, I do not come to speak to these events due to my trauma, but after the lawlessness and illegal activities allowed to happen in Bellevue on Sunday, January 28th, where cars were allowed to illegally park and block roads, restricting the freedom of movement of other Bellevue residents without consequence, I felt compelled to speak out. Illegally blocking roads and restricting others' freedoms of movement is not a constitutionally protected right. And when journalists ask mayor and deputy mayor why the lawlessness and illegal activity is allowed to happen in the city of Bellevue without consequence, and the mayor's response is, you want arrests to happen like Alabama in 1960s, it makes me want to ask if the mayor thinks the constituents of this city is stupid. It gives to answer like that, that we aren't intelligent enough to understand the full ramifications of allowing lawlessness and illegal activities to happen without consequence. It is basically ruling out the red carpet for more lawlessness and illegal activities. And as a marginalized member of the community, I get tired of wealthy white liberals using marginalized communities as human shields to deflect from divert from poor decision-making, emotionally blackmailing others with attempting guilt and shame of past sins to silence people asking honest questions. You do not have the moral high ground here after four past four years of supporting policies detrimental to marginalized communities that put thousands of us in body bags, namely Housing First, Harm Reduction, and Defund the Police. The truth is, the mayor cares more about the pocketbook for pet projects than upholding law and order because right now activists and judges are paying out millions to Black Lives Matter and Antifa after month-long rioting, looting, and burning down cities. Refusing to disperse and getting hurt during violently resisting arrest, the lawlessness and illegal activity allowed to happen in this city, January 28th, should not be shrugged off or swept under the rug. And I feel that Bellevue will continue to degrade under current leadership. Thank you.
The next speaker is Deborah Deutsch.
That is three people who have spoken to that. And so that is the limit on that commentary. Go ahead.
The next speaker is Deborah Deutsch.
Good evening, Mayor Robinson, Deputy Mayor of Malacooton, and council members. I'm Deborah Deutsch, and I've lived in Newport Hills for 42 years. And I am here tonight to speak to the comprehensive plan and the current designation, MUL, that is being studied for the redevelopment of the shopping center. 30 years ago, in 1994, the SubArea Plan identified that the revitalization of viability of the shopping center was a community issue. And in those 30 years, changes have occurred. The appearance and the of the buildings and the viability has deteriorated. Some tenants have been forced to use space heaters to conduct their business. Roof leaks are captured in buckets. Our community loves our longtime small businesses, but they deserve and we deserve an inviting, safe place to live and shop. Tonight, I have two requests. The first is that economic development research and develop recommendations that will support small businesses during any redevelopment of a neighborhood center. The city of Kirkland has recently been successful in the implementation of small business transitional support plans. And two, to consider MUL-M designation to allow for more flexibility and for local businesses, the community, and the city of Bellevue to integrate new and existing uses that embraces the economic viability of our center. Tonight, I am simply asking for your help. Please help us. Help us make our community stronger and more livable. And thank you for listening.
The next speaker is Robert Shin. Mr. Shin, it looks like you were signed up in person, but if you're online, could you please use the raise hand function to identify yourself? The next speaker is Abraham Willner Martin, who is joining us virtually. Can you hear me?
Hello.
Hello, your time begins now.
Hi, my name is Abraham Willner Martin. I am a third-generation resident of Bellevue, and I am here to speak in support of the Bike Bellevue Agenda and Vision Zero. Now, previously, the council has unanimously passed Vision Zero and committed to reducing serious injuries and deaths via accident bikes to zero by 2030. This is six years away, and the major plan that we had done a bunch of research for and that staff's road safety assessments had identified as like potential improvements to protect vulnerable road users has stalled due to reasons that are somewhat unclear to me as a layman, but that I'm sure are very clear to the people involved. I would like to ask that Vision Zero and Bike Bellevue be re-added to the agenda, that we redouble our commitments, and that the council does not back down on the commitments it has made in this setting. The council has done an amazing job setting vision for Vision Zero, setting principles for Bike Bellevue. You have amazing experts in city staff who do transportation planning for a living and are well-equipped to implement this vision. We really don't have a whole lot of time before Vision Zero comes up. Six years is not very long in the scope of infrastructure projects like this. The future is on its way. We have a plan. It is a good plan, and the people who are currently questioning that plan really should have brought those questions up when the council was considering this in March of 2023. As it is right now, the council has committed to doing this, and we would like to see a redoubled commitment and an increase of budget and not another delay. We we residents of Bellevue who are interested in like protecting the safety of two-wheeled travelers in Bellevue and the surrounding suburbs, we want to see this project completed more than anything. It would mean the world in a discussion where tonight we've heard so many people speak about safety. The safety of bikers matters, and it is something that is so often overlooked. And it means so much that Bike Bellevue and Vision Zero have been put on the agenda, and we hope to God that they remain priorities and that their budgets are restored and that we are able to get the crowning achievements in bike transport availability that Bellevue really deserves in in this time where so much research says how important that is to the safety of the community. Thank you so much.
Thank you. We do have time for one additional speaker before oral communications is over, and that is Steve Fanta, who's joining us online. Mr. Fanta, can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Thank you.
Okay, your time begins now.
All right. I've been a Bellevue resident for 29 years. Tonight, I'd like to speak about the city's Keep Bellevue Beautiful program to recognize this the first year of its accomplishments and to offer some opportunities on how to do even better. When I started Bellevue Green and Clean four years ago, my goal was to build community pride through environmental stewardship and to serve as a catalyst to build partnerships between residents, government, businesses, civic and faith organizations, and schools to show how we can all make a difference in our community. It was a bit of an upstream swim convincing city leaders that Bellevue indeed had a litter problem, but I'm very grateful that with perseverance and support from a few key individuals, we now have a funded program with a full-time staff position dedicated to keeping our city clean. I'd like to publicly recognize and thank council members Janizan and Jared Nguyenheis, who have been steadfast supporters of my efforts from the beginning and continue to show up for cleanup events in our neighborhoods and our natural areas. I'd also like to recognize Mark Heilman in the Community Development Department for believing in my proposal and shepherding it through the budget process, along with several folks in the Parks Department for their semi-clandestine support of my earlier cleanups in the Cold Creek Natural Area. The genesis of Keep Bellevue Beautiful promised to be more than just t-shirt giveaways and monthly cleanups in high-visibility locations. It's been frustrating that the rollout of the Adopt a Street program has been pushed back to the third quarter of 2024, and I have yet to see any action taken to allow residents to request city services to pick up bags of litter that they have collected using the My Bellevue app. This has long been a problem and has deterred many willing civic-minded residents from picking up litter on their own. Without city support, the only viable options are for people to take the collected bags home to include in their own residential pickup if they could even fit in their gray bins or finding nearby commercial dumpsters and risk upsetting business owners. KBB has taken on the task of managing the collection of abandoned shopping carts, which have become an ongoing eyesore throughout the city. While the initial solution of hiring an outside contractor at taxpayer expense to collect the carts and return them to the rightful owners has been somewhat effective, it is not a viable long-term solution. Other cities that are do that have done the same have, after a grace period, transitioned to charging the businesses a significant retrieval fee to encourage them to take ownership of the problem and find their own solutions, such as lock-in wheels or coin deposits. That must happen here as well. I want to see KBB become more proactive in developing a comprehensive litter reduction plan to address specific litter sources like cigarette butts, fast-food wrappers, and beverage containers. Establishing a closer working relation with volunteer groups as well as other city departments like transportation, parks, and environmental services is critical in order to move forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you. That does bring us to the end of our allotted time for oral communications. If you were unable to speak this evening, I would encourage you to email the council at council@bellevewa.gov. Mayor, I'll turn it back to you.
Thank you very much. I think we'll, excuse me. Mr. Zimmerman, we just heard, we just heard the reason why. I'm going to ask you to leave so you're not interrupting the council meeting. I'm going to ask you to leave so you don't interrupt the council meeting. You cannot speak tonight. Mr. Zimmerman, I'm going to ask you to please stop interrupting the council meeting. We're going to take a little break here for about one minute, and I'm going to ask Mr. Zimmerman to leave. Okay, we shall resume, and we're going to resume with a report from the city manager, Mrs. Carlson.
Thank you, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and council members. Before I bring up the city manager report that's on the agenda, I'd like to provide a statement about the city's actions related to the demonstration last week. On behalf of the city of Bellevue, I want to express my gratitude to Police Chief Shirley and the entire Bellevue Police Department for their professionalism, their thoughtfulness, and intentional management of the demonstrations on Bellevue Way on January 28th. The police department's approach to this event displayed its commitment to public safety, de-escalation, and preserving the constitutional right to protest. In this case, no one was hurt. The emergency services were not impacted, and transportation disruptions were minimal. Consistent with any public safety operation in the city of Bellevue, the police chief and the lead incident commander have authority over the police response. Last Sunday's events were consistent with our protocols at every level. In incidents revolve result involving public safety, the police department and city manager's office do maintain close contact to ensure all parties stay informed for situational awareness. And importantly, all operational decisions stay with the police chief and the incident commander. Moving forward, like other events that involve law enforcement here in the city of Bellevue, our city will learn from the incident, and we will apply this knowledge in the future to ensure demonstrations in the city of Bellevue are lawful and peaceful. For anyone interested in more information about the Bellevue Police approach in this case, please visit bellevuebeatblog.com for our post on the demonstration. And finally, thank you again to our police department for their dedication to keeping our city safe every day. Thank you, Mayor. Now, for the other city. Now, for the other city manager report, I would like to invite Bianca Siegel, Assistant Director for Citywide Policy and Programs, and Nico Quijano, Homelessness Outreach Program Manager, to provide counsel with an update on the city's Pilot Safe Parking Program, which you heard a little bit about. Staff will present an overview of the program and key steps leading to the program launch. I will note that council's consideration of the operational contract and lease agreement for the upcoming pilot program is also on your consent agenda. And this information today is for information, and no direction is being sought. And with that, I'll hand it over to Bianca.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and council members. We're really happy to be here to share information with you and the community about next steps in expanding an important piece of the city's network of services for unhoused community members. The city's Pilot Safe Parking Program, which does implement a priority program of the council, will provide space for up to 20 individuals or families who are living in their vehicles and pair them with the critical services needed to support them on their path to permanent housing. The Safe Parking Lot will be hosted on city-owned property at 515-116th Avenue Northeast, or otherwise known as the Lincoln Center. In order to increase awareness of the pilot program, staff has conducted door-to-door outreach with businesses along 116th multiple times. We have met to discuss the program with its nearest neighbor, which is the hotel just to the north, and we will continue to share information with the community as the program moves forward. Anyone with questions about the program can reach out directly to me or Nico or email our new email address homelessness@bellevewa.gov, and we will respond to questions there. I want to note that we did receive some questions from Councilmember Nguyen House earlier today. We'll address some of those in the presentation and follow up separately on anything that we aren't able to cover tonight. And I'll let Nico share more about the program.
Hello, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and City Council. Following a thorough selection process, staff has negotiated an operational agreement with For Tomorrow to facilitate the city's Safe Parking Pilot. For Tomorrow is an excellent local organization with a proven track record of facilitating programs that serve residents of Bellevue and the greater east side. Their executive director, Monique Martinez, and chief of staff and operations, Laura Delmundo, are in attendance for today's city council meeting. Through programs they currently run, they have experienced supporting families experiencing homelessness. The population this program will prioritize, and they currently receive funding from the city of Bellevue to help shelter individuals experiencing homelessness in hotels as they transition out of homelessness and into stable housing. They are partnering with a homelessness services consulting firm called I2 with extensive experience in developing safe parking and other homelessness services who are well-versed in everything from the broad picture of how a program helps a population in need to the granular details such as how to best fence a parking lot. In For Tomorrow and I2, we believe we found an ideal team to facilitate this program. For Tomorrow's Safe Parking Program will prioritize families with children that are living in their vehicles, though they will also serve other residents of Bellevue who are living in their vehicles when possible. The program will give preference to households living in passenger vehicles, though they will consider each vehicle on a case-by-case basis, prioritizing safety and setting additional conditions for larger vehicles as necessary. We will work closely with other agencies that provide services to families seeking housing to ensure that this program is known to and connects to those in need. People living on site will be offered the ability to use the staffed day center, which includes laundry facilities, restrooms and showers, and a kitchen. These services will be available to program participants on a daily basis. The building will also host onsite supportive services and offices for For Tomorrow staff. Program participants will commit to meeting regularly with a case manager who will support their progress. The goal of the program will be to help each household that participates in the program find stable housing. My team will continue work with individuals living in their vehicles who do not want to receive supportive services or attempt to find stable housing, but they will not be referred to the Safe Parking Program. For Tomorrow and the city manager's office continues to partner with Bellevue Police Department, Bellevue Fire, and many others to work on program safety for both those living in the program and for the surrounding community. Feedback from neighboring businesses has informed the conditions of operation outlined in both the contract and in the permit the site has been granted in order to run as a Safe Parking Program. Potential program participants will be identified by the city's homelessness outreach team, complete a screening process, and enroll in the program, including agreeing to a code of conduct before being invited to park on-site. The parking lot will be fenced. There will be a city-contracted regular security patrol facilitated by a third-party security agency that the city already contracts with, and staff management will be available 24/7 to provide program oversight whenever needed. In the coming weeks, For Tomorrow will hire the staff required to run the program, and the city of Bellevue will complete needed improvements to the site, including the installation of fencing and remodeling of the day center area, with an expected launch sometime in early spring. Success for the program will mean both helping those that participate in the program find the stability and support they need and also doing so in a context that keeps them and the surrounding community safe. We will measure individual program participant outcomes and demographics and also track community feedback and incidents on-site. I will meet with Monique and the program's leadership team at least monthly to review the latest data from the program and ensure that this program serves as an example of the good work we can do in our community when we roll up our sleeves and get to work. Creating community will be an important component of launching this program. Individuals interested in contributing to the program or helping program participants to feel welcomed are encouraged to reach out to me for more information. My contact information is listed in the memo attached to the Safe Parking Agenda item for today's council meeting and on the city of Bellevue's homelessness information page. As with the Eastgate Shelter and Housing Campus that opened last year, the new program can hopefully serve as a beacon of hope and a pathway forward for folks who are not currently housed. Knowing that there are options and resources available to actually meet their needs can inspire the folks that we are working with to finally go ahead and get that ID or other identifying document, give them reason to believe that they really can find a job or finish an educational program, and to further believe that they have a legitimate chance of finally getting indoors. It's exciting to be a part of the launch of this program and to contribute to the lighting of another one of those beacons that will help more people find a way home. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Are you done, city manager? Okay, thank you. So, on to the consent calendar. Do I have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
I move to approve our consent calendar. Second?
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we're going to take a 10-minute break, so 10 after. But before we do that, I would like to commend councilmembers on for passing of this initiative. It is because of you that we have a Safe Parking Program. You initiated that, and of course, we all supported it. So, I want to commend you for that.
Well, I really appreciate my colleague's support for this. It is very important.
Okay, let's take a break till 10 after. We are going to resume our meeting, and we have an ordinance tonight, 6676. And I will ask the city manager to introduce it, please.
Thank you, Mayor, and council members. We have one proposed ordinance on the agenda, extending the expiration of building and clearing and grading applications and issued permits. We're seeking direction on this item tonight, and staff is requesting council consider adoption of the proposed ordinance. So, joining at the table, we have Greg Strater, the city's building official from Development Services Department. With that, I'll turn it over to Greg.
Thank you, Ms. City Manager.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, council members. I'll keep my presentation brief this evening. As the city manager indicated, this is an ordinance to extend the time limits and expiration periods by 180 days for the building and clearing and grading permit applications and issued permits. I'll talk a little bit about the time limits on the applications and permits and past similar extension ordinances that council has approved, the number of affected applications and permits. And so, to answer the question of why are there time limits on applications and permits, it's really intended to ensure that construction happens to relatively current codes. There's always some lag. And also, the trade-off is that the vesting at the permit application provides certainty to developers as to what the codes will be throughout the life of that review and construction process. There were prior ordinances resulting from the pandemic in 2020 and 2023, and also back in 2010 and 2011 because of the housing crisis. They were very similar. There were some slight differences. I provided more detail in the agenda memo. We had considerable stakeholder feedback. You heard a little bit about that earlier this evening from Abby Dewise, representing the Bellevue Development Committee, I believe, and also speaking on her own behalf. Also, former councilmember Kevin Wallace spoke on behalf of the ordinance supporting it. And then I think council also received an email, maybe late this afternoon, from Jessica Clausen, the chair of the Bellevue Chamber Plush Committee, supporting it on behalf of that group. We also, as part of that stakeholder feedback, went through a process of considering how we could help the projects in other ways, and that resulted in a policy that facilitates reapplication for building permits if the design is not changing significantly and it's still vested under the same set of codes. That saves cost and time for the developers and their design team. So, that has been implemented, and that will be beneficial to those projects, especially through March 14th, the day before the implementation of the new set of construction and fire codes. And I'll be coming back to council in early March with those. The number of applications and permits. And a quick apology on this slide. I realized just before the meeting this evening that this table is actually outdated. We originally intended to bring this to council in early November. The table, the chart that was provided in the agenda memo, is accurate. The snapshot in time in late January, there were about 9,400 permits, applications, and permits that would be impacted. So, I apologize again for the mistake for the outdated chart in this slide. And with that, Mayor, I'll turn it back to you.
Okay, thank you very much, Greg. Any comments or questions on this? Okay, councilmembers on.
Yeah, my quick comment is that I really appreciate this work because in these continual uncertain times, giving some certainty is really important, and I really appreciate the timelines that were put in there about, it's not vesting forever, it's vesting for just the right amount of time to account for the higher interest rates that hopefully will start coming down and making sure that we actually are getting the development that we need. So, I really appreciate that nuance of threading a needle through here. So, thank you.
Thank you, councilmembers on.
Great. Councilmember Nguyen House?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to just take a minute to thank our wonderful staff for working with the development community to bring this about and working so quickly. This is desperately needed. It's also going to, I think, save us some time and resources in the future as well, given that we don't have to reapprove permits that may have come in already previously. So, and this is a time where this is much needed, as councilmember, former councilmember Wallace mentioned. It's a much different environment than it was a year, two years ago. So, so glad that we can make this happen so quickly. The city's going to benefit from it. It's another example of great collaboration between public and private to get to good policy that's going to benefit the city. So, thank you so much for all the great work and moving so quickly on this.
Thank you, councilmember Nguyen House.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to echo Councilmember Nguyen House's comments. I mean, this kind of a collaboration is really fantastic. I think it's a good example of a great process. I hope we can replicate it in other areas. And I just think that this is clearly an early accomplishment and really appreciate all of your efforts, and this is really how we get it done. So, thank you so much.
Thank you, councilmember Hamilton.
Oh, sorry. Councilmember Stokes?
Oh, yeah, I just wanted to echo that also, that this is an approach we're taking here, I think, is very helpful. And I think, appreciate the staff putting this together and getting the information to us, and I think it was a very collaborative thing with the community. And I'm hoping this is something that we've, we're kind of taking a good look at it from the council and staff level to reach this and the community. This is, I think, something we do well at that and hope this is a, we always remember this, and when other stuff comes up, and apply the same approach on these. You can't always, you know, go a certain way on it, but I do think we should really acknowledge the collaborative work that gets us to this, and this is a really big deal. And it's going to really help us moving forward. So, I'm very pleased about this and very excited to put this in play.
And I'm going to say I agree with all my fellow councilmembers and commend this development committee that you put together. It seems to really help expedite these thoughtful actions, and it really is thoughtful, so I appreciate it. Any other comments or questions? Oh, councilmember Lee, go ahead.
Just a quick one. This is nothing new. As you mentioned, you know, we had previously done extension ordinances with the 2010, 2011 housing crisis. And the last one is 2020, 2023 pandemic impacts. And this is a situation responding to the even more drastic impact on the housing, you know, on the development in the city. After the pandemic, we're still recovering from that. So, it makes sense. We're just being nimble, flexible, make sure that we respond to the economic situation. Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to ask the deputy mayor to make a motion.
I move to adopt ordinance 6676, extending the life of certain complete building permit applications, complete clearing and grading permit applications, issued building permits, and issued clearing and grading permits when complete permit applications have been submitted to the city or the issued permits remain active between the effective dates of this ordinance and March 14, 2024.
Second?
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we have one study session item, and we are going to receive a state legislative update. City manager, is there anything else you'd like to add?
Let me just introduce the staff, Mayor, thank you. This is a mid-session update, and to provide that update today, we have, from the city manager's office, Jenicee Atkins, Chief of External Affairs, and Katie Kusenbahalzy, Acting Assistant Director of Intergovernmental Affairs. And with that, I will hand it over to Jenicee.
Thank you, city manager. Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, councilmembers. It's a pleasure to be before you this evening with my colleague Katie Kusenbahalzy. We will get right to it. Happy middle of session. We are not looking for your direction or action tonight. We just wanted to give you a snapshot of how things are going in Olympia right now because we know you're following these things, getting asked questions, and really paying attention because these things, as you know, come home to Bellevue where we have to implement and comply with a lot of the decisions made in Olympia. So, just a little preview of what we're going to do tonight. We will just remind you about the excellent state legislative agenda that you all helped craft and adopt in the fall. We'll give you a quick status update on priorities for Bellevue, a little bit of a snapshot of how we've been engaging as a city with our delegation and lawmakers, and then what will happen next for the second half of session and after the adjournment of session. So, as you recall, this is our 2024 state legislative agenda, which you all helped develop in the early fall, and then we adopted in October. The timing of doing this in the fall is really important because it gives us enough time to be not so early that things are no longer relevant, but enough time to lay foundation and do education with our lawmakers, with constituents in the community, and other stakeholders so that we don't begin the conversation in January, but already have really started a really ongoing discussion with our lawmakers about why these things are important to Bellevue and what Bellevue's interests are. And we have now turned it into a beautiful, shiny piece of paper that everyone enjoys having on their coffee table and hopefully not in their recycling bin. It's very beautiful. So, we've been sharing it with our lawmakers, and we are excited to have such a nice piece that we've received some compliments on to share our priorities. One of the top priority issues that we identified this year was around affordable housing and land use. We came in front of you multiple times last year. It was a very, very, I think, while we don't track a ton of data around Olympia and legislation, it might have been the busiest session on record in terms of housing and land use legislation. This session is trying to keep up. Even though it's a short session, there are a number of different housing, land use, and development bills that are still in motion. I won't go into too much detail, but I did want to give you just a little bit of a snapshot about the breadth of issues that are still in front of the legislature this session. We are doing a lot of work on issues like the ones up here, transit-oriented development, lots splitting, the housing element of our comprehensive plan, co-living legislation, green building and setback regulation, as well as funding tools. There's still legislation in motion around the real estate excise tax. There's still legislation in motion around the real estate excise tax. That bill, as an update for today, because today is the fiscal cutoff, technically, those bills did not make it out of committee today, but we think because it is a revenue bill, is likely to be necessary to implement the budget, so it will probably be revived, even though it didn't get a vote out of any committees so far. It did get hearings in both chambers, so we expect the REIT legislation to continue on forward or get kind of resurrected by the budget process. And notably, this year's REIT legislation does not include a local option REIT. That was one major distinction between the 2023 bill and the 2024 bill, so this doesn't have a local option REIT contained in it. The other major kind of category of priority for us was services and infrastructure for a growing community. Both of these were our top two priority issues in the long session, and so we continued those forward, though the kind of exact details have evolved. This year, our top priority issue here is around an electric fire engine and the charging infrastructure to make that a reality, both to be primarily homed at Station Number One on Bellevue Way, also at the new station under construction, Station Number 10. This is a joint request with the city of Redmond. We found out in January of last year, just after the session started, we found out that we were two, the two cities that were chosen first in the state to be selected for Department of Ecology grants for electrified fire engines. We're very excited about that. It was a challenging decision to move forward because the cost for an electric fire engine is usually about double or more than a conventional fire engine, so it's a major investment. We know that over time, that investment pays off and is worth it, but it meant that we had to really get creative about how we financed that and where we found the money. Bellevue and Redmond went together to Congress, and we still have a pending tentative federal earmark to help both of us with our costs for the electric fire engine, but we still have a little bit more to close the gap, and so we have a combined joint request of $800,000 to the state legislature out of the Climate Commitment Act. That is the one real kind of coffer that they have in Olympia that is robust right now. Because this is about electrification, we really are hopeful that we will get support from Olympia. We are tentatively or cautiously optimistic and really feel like this is in support of a lot of the legislature's objectives around climate and sustainability, community and public health, firefighter health, and public safety. So we're really excited to move this forward. And then in the same category, I will turn it over to my colleague Katie to talk about our transportation priorities.
Thank you, Genesee. So we have two signature transportation investments that we are looking to work with the legislature on this year. One of them is the Mountains of Sound Greenway Trail, the gap that's in Bellevue that we've been very successful in working with our state legislature, with PSRC, with our federal government, with Sound Transit. It's been a really incredible project that we've been working with our partners over 10 years. This particular project will have incredible connections to transit, to Bellevue College, and to housing. However, we have a bit of a situation where in order for us to construct the project, we need to have funding at a specific time. Now, part of our partners in this project has been the state legislature. The legislature awarded us $6.9 million in the Move Ahead Washington Project. We need to fulfill that funding in the 2025 to 2027 timeframe in order for us to fulfill a commitment or an obligation from some PSRC federal funds. Unfortunately, last year, that timeframe from the legislature was pushed out, and so what we're doing right now is working very hard with our delegation and with the legislature to demonstrate the need for that funding to be moved up in the 2025, 2027 budget timeframe. Many thanks to many of you who have gone down and really advocated for that project. The good news is, is that the governor's proposed supplemental budget has identified that timeframe that we needed in order to obligate the federal funds. So we're looking good right now, but we're being optimistic. We're waiting for the House and the Senate proposed transportation budgets to be coming out, the supplemental budgets. So more to come on that. The other item on the list is the I-405 and 167 funding gap. This has been a priority for the city for many years to ensure that the 50-mile system is effective and is moving folks up and down that corridor. The city has played a key role in this issue for many, many years, including in 2019 with the authorization of tolling up and down the corridor, and then with a $450 million funding gap that was mostly solved for in 2022. The council was very helpful in making sure that that was shared widely with the state legislature. Unfortunately, that funding gap has come to surface once again. There is a $275 million funding gap, and there has been a lot of work to ensure that member cities and jurisdictions up and down the corridor are aware of the options to move forward with that project. The WashDOT, Washington State Department of Transportation, just published their financial plan report and sent it to the legislature last week, and inside that report, it not only talks about the financial strategies that they are looking at, but it also identifies some solutions that our executive advisory group members are proposing, including enough funding for preliminary engineering on projects, including projects of importance in Bellevue, some intersection and interchange improvement projects. We are looking for practical solutions in this legislative session, but moving forward, we know that there's going to have to be a major investment in transportation, likely not something that's going to happen immediately in this short legislative session, but something that we will need to work collaboratively with our legislators during the interim. So we're looking forward to a potential transportation package in the next legislative session or beyond. So moving on, we have been doing a lot of work, thanks to all of you, and also a lot of staff support. I just wanted to let you know about some of the engagement we've been doing up till this date and some additional work to come. We are reviewing from a staff level over 300 pieces of legislation. Now, that reduces every time there's a cutoff that happens, but we are just doing an extensive amount of making sure that not only are we hearing what our community members are saying, what our associations are saying, but also what our internal staff are providing feedback on. Councilmember testimony is a part of that strategy. Thank you, Councilmember Newenhouse, and Mayor, and others who have been very instrumental in not only going down to Olympia, but also providing feedback to our legislative delegation. Speaking of our legislative delegation, Bellevue Day was on February 2nd. Mayor and deputy mayor were able to meet with the delegation members from the two legislative districts and advocate for both the fire, the electric fire engine, and also the Mountains of Sound Greenway Trust funding. And then, of course, coming up this week, Councilmember Lee and Councilmembers on will be attending the AWC City Action Days, where there'll be a lot of information shared, not only from the governor and from AWC, but an opportunity to engage with our members as well. It doesn't end there. There will be some additional work this legislative session, but we'll also really start working to plan out the interim activities and how to prepare for 2025.
Just to pick up on that last note, we call it, the post-session time, we call it the interim. It is a really critical time, so we don't spend too much time before we start thinking ahead to 2025, because the next year will be the long session. That's where they make the three, two-year budgets. That provides a lot of opportunity for, obviously, appropriations and investment for the residents and communities that make up Bellevue, but it's also an opportunity to have more thoughtful policy work. So we get to work immediately, working with our delegation, to lay foundation and groundwork for our next set of priorities, to tell them what is going well and what is challenging for the city of Bellevue with state legislation, and to say thank you, and to show them the things that they have helped build and create in Bellevue that are working well and that are bearing fruit. So it's great work that we get to do during the interim, to have those not rushed conversations. The conversations we have during session are usually pretty compact, and so there's a lot of that really important foundation that we lay during the interim. And then finally, in terms of next steps, tomorrow is Day 30, so we are already halfway through, as they say on the baking show. We are closing in already toward the second half of session. Today is the last day of fiscal committee work. That means they are fully on the floor starting tomorrow. That is a, kind of the first, I'd say, this is, we're moving into the second turn of the race, to use a horse racing metaphor. We are really starting to move toward the budget. We will get the next economic and revenue forecast on Valentine's Day. We think about a week later, we will see the budget proposals from the House and Senate on capital operating and transportation. That's only a couple of weeks left until adjournment, so it will be pretty compact, and things will start to just move faster and faster. And you can see your cutoff dates further down on the screen, and it'll be all finished by March 7th. That's when the dust begins to settle. We'll see what the governor does or doesn't sign into law, and then we get to really figure out what the cumulative impact is to Bellevue in terms of both budgets and appropriations, but also lots and lots of new laws and policy. So, that is really it in a nutshell. We are happy to field any questions that you might have, either here or elsewhere. We really appreciate your support and engagement throughout this process. As I reminded the mayor and deputy mayor, who did a great job with us in Olympia last week, and we're taking council members Lee and Zon with us this week down to Olympia, nothing can really replace the direct elected-to-elected conversation that you're able to have. It carries a different type of weight, so we really appreciate your direct engagement and support throughout the process and throughout the year. And I think that is, that is all. Thank you very much.
Thank you for the presentation. I think I speak for all of us, and I thank you for all the work you do to advocate for our legislative agenda, doing a really good job, and I appreciate you keeping us on top of what's happening because it's ever-changing, as you know. If you have a long question, it might be best to email, but if you have any comments or questions you want to make before we adjourn tonight, feel free, not seeing any. So thank you so much. We will stay tuned and follow the progress.
Thank you.
Okay, and with that, we are adjourned.